The June 27th, 2016 Board of Education meeting. We're back from executive session, so I just need a motion for our regular meeting.
I move we approve the agenda.
Thank you.
A second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. First item on the board agenda is for Dr. Dole.
So, as tradition has it, in this school district, we give an award to the award. We recognize the services of the outgoing board president. And obviously, this, again, this year, in her second term as president, is Vanessa. And also, the tradition is that we have student artwork, almost always, don't we? Yes. Student artwork to commemorate the passing of Vanessa back to a regular board member. No, she's not dying. She's not dying. So Vanessa, I have appreciated not only your leadership of the board, but Vanessa and I have been in this business together for seven years. So she came on when I came on. And I remember at the time thinking that, who's this young person that's coming on the board? And I quickly found out that she was full of a lot of confidence, a lot of common sense, a lot of passion. And it's really been fun working with you and getting to know your daughters. But most important, not most importantly, but I see Amelia a lot, and it's really been fun. So, on behalf of this school community and the community of Lawrence, thank you for a year's work as board president. And let's see what present you have.
Okay, thank you.
This one first, yeah? Great.
Yeah, I'll take those scissors. You wrapped them so well.
Yeah, I did, I did.
Wrapped him too well.
Right. Lots of tape. It's great. So do you remember that, okay, so this is, "The Mop Is For Mom", which now is "Mom and Pop Can Mop"? It's the animated alphabet page, thanks to Angelique Kobler, or I'm sorry, Angelique Nedved. We worked with this company and changed it over to something that was slightly less offensive to me and the world, feminists everywhere. So this is amazing.
Say that one more time. They changed, they used to be what?
So this is a worksheet that kindergarteners get, right? And you basically cut out the words and put them in order. And it says, "The mop is for mom", okay? So the night that my daughter brought this home from kindergarten, guess who had to mop the floor to prove that no, the mop is not just for mom? But no, so then, obviously with phonetics and with phonics, like you can't just like have any word you want. But they were able to rework the worksheet, and now it says, "Mom and Pop Can Mop". How exciting!
That's cool.
Right, I can amend it myself with markers. That's lovely. Oh, I'm so excited. Thank you.
I knew about that one. I didn't know about this one.
I will hang this proudly. I'm gonna cut myself. And there will be three board members only if they go to the hospital. Right, right. Can't vote on anything. Wow, lovely. So it is a teapot. And a student made this? You said you have the name? Wow.
Sarah Courtwright, senior, graduated senior from Lawrence High.
Lovely.
Very nice.
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Anyway, thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you. Oh, okay, I'll have to unwrap that somewhere. Thank you. Great choices, Shannon. Okay, I'm up next. Okay, so next, I want to recognize you, our outgoing superintendent.
We could have just had this meeting ourselves.
I know, we really could have. So I do have some, I'm better at writing than I am just speaking off the cuff, so I have some things that I wanna, I wanna say. So, when I think, you're right, like seven years, we came on at the same time. And man, seven years ago, we were in a mess. We had five cuts to our budget that first year, accounting to 10% overall, less funding. I remember walking through Cordley Elementary with you before, you know, the orientation or whatever, and seeing like the bathrooms that were just, I think, 20 coats of paint or something. I mean, and you saying, "We can't educate kids in this environment, it's not fair." So neglected facilities, no unified vision for how to address it, significant achievement gaps that were predictable by race and socioeconomic status, and graduation rates far below ideals. And honestly, I think any one of those issues taken alone is a lot to do, a lot to deal with. And while we're still dealing with insufficient budgets, hopefully next year, the court will help get the legislature to fix that. We have really weathered this better than many districts. And I think part of that is the strong relationship that you have with the Lawrence Schools Foundation, your willingness to get out in the community and talk about the importance of our schools, and our community's willingness, you know, when we are given the option to raise local taxes, like we were last year or two years ago with the local option budget, our community steps up and does it. I think they have a lot of trust in us. And part of that is definitely because of all the outreach that you do. But we passed the largest bond issue in school district history, $92.5 million. And we have a lot to be proud of with the investments that we've made in our schools. We've made steady progress closing achievement gaps while continuing to raise achievement for all students. And honestly, the commitment that Dr. Dole made to the Pacific Education Group's work in confronting those achievement gaps by saying, "This is something that we have control over and we are going to do better", talking about privilege and institutionalized racism, and confronting those issues even though they were difficult and messy and not like fun to talk about. It's brave and a testament to your character and leadership that we didn't shy away from that. And will be certainly a large part of your legacy and one that I think we're all willing to carry on. And then, in 2009, I've said this now three times, but it's really important and bears mentioning again. In 2009, seven years ago, 185 of our students didn't make it to graduation. Proving graduation rates became a major focus of our district. And steady progress has been made each of the seven years since. So if you look at that graph, it's steady progress every year. But in 2015, that number dropped from 185 to just 56 students who didn't make it to graduation, a difference of 129 kids who benefited from your leadership, your willingness to focus on that as a goal, to talk with staff at every opportunity, to make that a focal point for all of the data carousel work that's done in each of the schools, and just get everyone to rally behind that idea that we can do better and we must do better. So I thank you so much for the positive impact that you've had on our schools, on all of our kids that are in these schools. And then, lastly, I said this at your reception, so it's not new to you. But, you know, you've won numerous impressive awards over the years, including Kansas Superintendent of the Year in 2014, KU's Wieland Kansas Leadership for Learning Award, Kansas State University's Dan and Cheryl Young Excellence in Education Award. But I really do feel like you deserve another award for surviving Lawrence for seven years. We have an amazing engaged community that continuously comes out to support education, but we're also demanding and persistent and involved. And we don't spend much time resting or celebrating after we make progress. We are moving on to the next thing, the next problem, the next issue. And you have brought a lot of energy to this work. It's amazing that in seven years, you didn't burn out, you didn't say this is too much. You were eager and willing to continually rise to the challenge of setting goals and meeting them. It's been a privilege and an honor to work with you, and you will be missed. And so I have a gift to present to you on behalf of our board. And thank you, Janice and Julie, for helping to select it. We want to make sure that you don't forget Lawrence, as though that would be possible. And this artwork was, the artist is Jill Bear, who was a Lawrence High School senior.
So it's a picture of important people. Says, "Welcome to Lawrence, Kansas, population 90,011", then people from, oh, this is really cool. Very nice. Who's the artist again?
Jill Bear.
Very cool. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, and I think Shannon has some words she'd like to share.
Well, I really could just say ditto to everything that Vanessa just said. And I just, I just wanted to say a couple of things, because I've been here for five of your seven years. So I just, I, it's kind of bittersweet, because I'm really excited for you as you move on to the next step in your career and the new people who get to benefit from your leadership and expertise. I'm excited to work with Kyle as our new superintendent. But it's kind of sad to say goodbye, and I just wanted to say thank you. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. One of the things that you think about when you leave a position is that you hope you left it a little better than when you took it. And I'm confident that with the support of board members along the way, that we've been able to do that. And I'm really, really comfortable handing this off to the new leadership team. Kyle and his team, they have great instincts, they're really good people. And so there's gonna be a lot of challenges that come forth. But it really feels good to pass the baton to the next generation and let them take it and take it to the next step. So thank you to this board and all previous boards that hired me and supported me and to the community. So, thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, let me say ditto. But we hope we'll see you back when we unveil some of the new schools.
I walked through Pinney today, just because I wanted to kind of see it all. They haven't really started gutting it yet, but I wanted to see it before. So absolutely, particularly Pinney, I think that's gonna be a special, special project. So I would very gladly come back for that one. Thanks.
Okay, next is recognition of audience, but I don't think we have any this evening. Seeing a no, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Those items are considered routine and are adopted by one motion unless any board member or the superintendent would request that an item be removed. Then those items would be voted on separately.
I move the Board of Education adopt the items listed on the consent agenda.
Great. Do you have a retirement to recognize, Shannon?
I do. You want to second the motion, Rick?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, and Shannon, you'll recognize?
We have two retirements to recognize this evening. First, Michael Case, thank him for his 11 years of service and devotion to the community and its schools. And also Brian Lawrence, thanking him for 13 years of service and devotion to the community and our schools.
Thank you very much. Okay, any discussion? Okay, then Janice.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, report of the President of the Board of Education. I don't, actually, I do, I have, I'm glad I remembered it. The Lawrence Voter Education Coalition has been meeting, and I've been participating in some of their work. They really want a school board member to sit on that committee in order to kind of look at, I think last year during the legislative, or during the election cycle, the school board election got buried a little bit. And I think the danger of that happening as we move into being part of like a general election ticket is even greater. And so I think having a presence in that committee and being able to help with planning some of the work that they do is important. They will be hosting an event in July, but I'll be out of town. And I wanted to see if anyone had an interest in kind of if I pass the baton, if you want to serve on, I think they meet periodically, but I think they're meeting again in July. I don't have the date yet, because I had to miss their last meeting, but I could forward that. So let me know, email me, and I will give them your contact information if you're interested in serving in that role. And then I think that might be a committee that we want to consider listing in the board committees and actually have someone formally be part of it in the future. Because I do think that we're gonna have to work hard to make sure people understand and know about our races, given the fact that they're gonna be bundled with so much else that's going on. Okay, and then I will turn it over to Dr. Dole.
Couple of quick announcements. Congratulations to Lawrence High students Mia Waters and Megan Wisby for placing 10th in the nation during the National History Day competition at the University of Maryland College Park last week with their group exhibit entitled "The Chaos of Music After World War I". Lawrence High, a couple of our middle schools have a long tradition of doing really outstanding work around National History Day. Thanks and congratulations to Jasmine McNair, who represented Lawrence High and our school district so well during the Regional Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year contest. Jasmine did not advance to the national level, but she certainly has been a remarkable youth and a great ambassador for the state. And finally, district offices will be closed Monday due to Independence Day. Thank you.
Ah, sorry. We'll move on to recognition of coaches at Lawrence High School, and we have Bill DeWitt, the Assistant Principal and Athletic Director.
Good evening, everyone. Again, Bill DeWitt, Lawrence High School. Little background, and I included some literature in the board meeting, so hopefully everybody got a chance to look at it. So I'm not gonna rehash it, but just kind of highlight a few things of what was required of me and kind of the ad hoc group we put together. Back in March, this board was approached by a community member with a request to name one of the facilities in Lawrence High School after one of our coaches, which is a great request. Myself, a coach, understanding all the dedication, all the sacrifice, all the time away from families you put into it to make it great. That's probably the highest honor you can give to somebody, and so it was a worthy study. And what we uncovered, obviously through the, through the history of Lawrence High School, which has a great athletic history, you find that there are many great coaches. And naming a facility after one of those coaches is almost an exercise in trying to choose your favorite child. There's many of them, and many are worthy. And as it says kind of in the report, to pick one or the other is almost too much of a political process. And so our recommendation as a school is not to do that. But what it did allow us as kind of a group was to begin talking about ways in which we could kind of recognize some of the outstanding coaches we've had throughout our history. And so we've begun that discussion in terms of how we could properly do it. And so there's some information included in there as to how we could approach that. I'm not really looking to recommend or look for anything from the board. Once we go down that path, I'd probably request some financial help, of course. But you also know that Lawrence campus is under kind of a facility study, so I think that creates an opportunity to really honor some great legacies at the school in a proper way. And if you look at the report, you know, our idea is obviously to do it in conjunction with the campus, because that's kind of where the life, the athletic body kind of happens. And, you know, big events, especially on Friday nights in the fall, bring a lot of traffic down to campus. And so our view is to honor it, not necessarily with a wall in a building that not everybody sees, but out in the open, more of a pavilion space where people can really enjoy it. So that's something that as a school, we want to continue to explore. So that's kind of where we left it as a school. Do you guys have any questions?
Shannon? Thank you for the work that you did on this. And I think that the recommendation that you've made about the outdoor display is a really great idea. Did you get as far in the discussion about how to finance the recognition? Because it is, it is kind of expensive to do the kind of, the kind of plaque or pedestal that you're looking at, as to whether there might be any opportunity to partner with, for instance, the Booster Club or alumni groups with the school to help offset some of the cost for installing it? Once, once we get to the point where we decide what we're doing with the campus as a whole and making that part of the master plan, perhaps?
Yeah, there will no doubt be a fundraising piece that'll have to come into it. I mean, we obviously have a great alumni body. I haven't reached out to them directly.
Okay, that was my question, whether you had kind of gotten to that point yet or not?
No, no, I have not gotten to that point.
Okay.
The point is to do it well and do it right. I would anticipate that we would have great support from our alumni. I mean, they're very passionate. And back to this exercise, depending on the generation you ask, they have a different answer. And you would hope you'd get that support. We have great community members that could sponsor as well. We're not afraid to ask those questions, we're not afraid to ask for that help. We just want to do it right, and we want to make sure that it mirrors the campus as it is. I mean, one of the beautiful things about Lawrence High is just, as you guys have built facilities there, you've really kind of held on to the tradition. Even though it's new, you still kind of have that tradition, and we want this to reflect it as well. So, you know, there's estimates there, but that talks about bronze work and brick work. And, you know, I haven't broken it down to the nickel, obviously, but I think it's something that we'd like to pursue.
And Rick?
So, just a comment. I think you guys did a really nice job in terms of putting this together and dealing with the issues. You know, I realize this came about as the result of a particular request. And, you know, that request, for reasons I think you've outlined, is one that I don't think we can honor. But, you know, if that request had not happened, you wouldn't be having this discussion. You wouldn't be having this, you know, talk about ways that you can actually honor all the great coaches you've had. So, you know, I appreciate the request that came forward, even though it's not, can't honor it. And I think something really good is gonna come out of this that would not have happened had that not happened. So I appreciate, appreciate the work.
I think, since Marcel's not here, but certainly, I'm on the facilities committee that we're talking about this master planning process, so I will kind of ask questions about this, incorporating it into the plan as we move forward. I think it's a really, really great idea, so thank you.
I want to echo that. Thank you so much for your work and for the committee's work on studying it and putting together a recommendation.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a report on CI3T from Leah Wisdom, the Coordinator for Student Intervention Programs.
Good evening. I guess I don't have to introduce myself, since you just did. If I can get my report up. I'm really happy to be here tonight, like really happy, because it's super hot outside and my son has a baseball game. So I was happy to have an excuse to not have to be there. Isn't that terrible? So I'm gonna take a really long time. Okay. All right, and so I am gonna give you a report tonight on our implementation of CI3T. And just as a reminder, I know you guys know, but the board goal is under excellence, and it's around supporting the institutionalization of the CI3T initiative in all of our buildings. So it's really difficult to create a report around this, because there's so much that I love to share. But I know we don't have time for that. So I'm gonna do my best to just succinctly give you a quick overview of CI3T, share a few sort of principal and teacher testimonials around the work, because I don't actually have people with me tonight. Sometimes I do that for this report, but I would like for you to hear some of their voices. We have that via video. And then, just a few examples of what we've done over the last year and how that's translating into what we're doing next year. So that's kind of the gist. You've seen this triangle before, and one of the most important things here, and with the sliding, you actually can't see it very well, but underneath, there's excellence, equity, and engagement. So this year, we added that on the frame, and I'm sorry that you can't see it, I can see it on mine. You can see it there. Good, 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 good. Oh yeah, maybe we could dim the lights. But we felt like it was really essential to include those pieces in the frame, because it really does fit, and maybe even with the lights down, you still can't see it. It really does, you know, everything that we do for students in the district fits into this frame. So we wanted to have excellence, equity, and engagement there. So that's something that we knew that we did. And when we think about sustainability, just wanted to backtrack and remind you of the implementation process that we've utilized as we're implementing CI3T. So our elementary schools came on board in 2013 and spent that year training and building their CI3T plan. Middle schools and high schools followed in 2014. And then just this last fall of 2015, the College and Career Center had a team, and they built their plan, went through a training series and built their plan. So starting this fall, all of our buildings will be implementing, some having implemented longer, moving into implementation year three, and College and Career Center just starting. When we think about sort of what research tells us is the science behind implementation, these are the phases that we've been going through. Exploration, installations, really diligently working through each of those. And really, we're here, we're at sustainability. So what we're trying to do moving forward is talk about how do we continue to make CI3T and the CI3T framework just a part of how we do business. So that's that institutionalization piece. So as you guys recall, I'm sure you've seen these manuals. This is the front of some of our manuals, right? Every single building has one of these. And then they revise them annually. So actually, right now, these teams are in the throes of making revisions based on feedback they've been receiving all year from stakeholders in their building. And this is just a template, kind of of what the primary plan looks like. So this is what we're doing for all students in those three domains. It's that green part of the triangle, right? It's everything that we're doing. And what makes it so powerful, what makes this primary plan so powerful, is that all the stakeholder groups are listed there. So in this case, you can just see faculty and staff. But there's, what are the responsibilities of faculty and staff in the area of academics? What are the responsibilities of students in the area, or faculty and staff in the area of behavior and in the area of social skills? So teams, representative teams from each building built those pieces out. And I know you've heard that piece before, I just think it's a really important reminder that those exist and that they take the time to do that. So an example of that is last year when we were adopting, we adopted Reading Street. Every building, at least elementary building, had to go in and say, "Okay, well, if we're gonna implement this resource, what are the responsibilities and expectations of teachers, you know, staff? What are the responsibilities and expectations of me as an administrator or of parents or of students?" So they had to work through those responsibility pieces and include them in their plan. So this is just a more drawn out one, this has faculty and staff. But what I want to talk about is some of the other parts, parts of the plan. So as you move away from the primary plan, every single building is working on, "Okay, we've got this primary plan, what are our procedures for teaching it? So how are we gonna introduce this to staff? How are we gonna ensure that students know and understand their responsibilities? What are we gonna do to inform our parents and our other stakeholders?" The other thing, I can turn that off, that they do in their plan is talk about and line out what their procedures are for reinforcing. So it's not enough just to build the plan and set it in a file cabinet. We want to make sure we're keeping in front of staff, keeping it in front of students. So they plan for that. And then also planning for how they're gonna monitor. And I think this is key, particularly as we think about the work we did last year and what we're gonna be doing next year. Because it's not just student monitoring, we have a lot of student data. We keep track of how students are doing in all these different areas. But also, how are staff feeling? Are they overwhelmed? How are they doing with implementation? So they're soliciting that feedback and then building it into their plan when they think about how to provide professional learning and how to support. I'm actually gonna skip over, I have a couple of videos for you, but I think in the interest of time, I want to, there's a couple others. But here we have some principals that are just sharing with you their experience with implementation and how it's provided them with the ability to really hang all the different things that they're doing in this framework versus being something separate. So this is an example of Southwest Middle School's plan. This is actually from last year. But just to point out, here's where the district standards are and the resources that we're using. In the middle is the behavior, which we've adopted PBIS as our framework, and I know you guys know that. And then here is the social skills component. Connect with Kids, what middle and high school are utilizing. Positive Action is what elementary is using. So I think what's important to note here is that the academic and the social components are the what we do, it's what we teach. And then the PBIS component, the middle, the behavior, it's how we teach it. So it's how teachers are gaining back the instructional time that they need to get all the things that they're doing, right? They're being proactive, they're being positive, they're teaching students what's expected versus just assuming implicitly that it is expected. So I think that's really important. So I do have another video, and we're gonna hear from some administrators talk about how they're empowering staff. So we have a little So, we have a little snippet at the beginning. You're going to hear how are they, that teaching component? How are we going to teach our staff about this plan? And then, the rest of the videos can talk a little bit about PBIS and how they're implementing PBIS in various buildings. I apologize. We're going to have to skip that. My computer went weird on me here.
Your son's game is open.
You told me you were going to heckle me tonight. Let me just try really quickly. The whole thing's frozen, so this is all you can see right now. I can't even show you my other slides.
I'll take your word for it.
You'll take it. Okay. So, I'm just going to move on and talk to you, just to fly with it. Since I can't show you the video, we had at, I've seen it a million times, so I can kind of give you the gist. Unfortunately, it's not nearly as animated or fun to watch. But at Southwest Middle School, for example, their CI3T team who happens to be highly talented and engaging with their staff, they like to do a lot of fun stuff. So, they planned ways for their staff to learn about the different aspects of the plan and then think about and plan for how they were going to teach the plan to students. So, they did that on back-to-school days. And then, their team also said, well, how are we going to be really exciting, you know, what exciting thing can we do to implement this with students? So, they planned during their assembly time to have a big kickoff there. I think we even have Sean, and you guys have Bow Wows, Bow Wow tickets. And so, they played the Bow Wow, they played that song and they did a lot of neat stuff to engage students in the process of positive behavior intervention and support. So, that was kind of neat. And then, Bill Dweck is actually speaking on the video in regards to some reinforcers for students. One of the things that they do at LHS, so as students are receiving tickets or demonstrating positive behaviors, they had to think about, well, what are some ways kids can cash in for those? And you can't just keep thinking bigger and, you know, more money. But what they did was, they knew that the games were really important to kids. They liked to show up to those Friday night games. And so, they had a game day package where a student could win that from a drawing. They showed up, they had like a couch in the end zone, they got pizza from Pizza Shuttle, they got to bring a buddy. So, it was just, they got free pass to get in. So, it was just one way that they were, it was a big get that they had. And then, finally, we were going to be able to hear a little bit from Dr. Basilo at South who has a great testimonial to last year, their first year of implementation, that basically, in her experience as administrator, she speaks to how it wasn't uncommon in the first, you know, two to four weeks to have office discipline referrals, to have students coming to the office with behavior issues and that it was into October and they'd only had one to two. And that she has a staff member who staffs the, you know, in-school suspension room, if you will, that it was so infrequently used that she had to reconsider how to utilize that staff member and start to rethink, okay, how can I put this individual into classrooms because I don't have a need as much to have somebody as available during that time? So, that was a great testimonial and we really are flying solo here. I don't know what's going on. So, can you guys see it on yours? You're just looking at that. All right, I apologize for that.
Can I turn off the computer or can I start back again?
I can try. I don't want to waste any too much time. While it's doing that, I'll keep talking. Oh. Maybe I can, maybe I could do it now. Okay, I'm going to skip that video because I just told you all about it. So, I wanted to show you here is we talked about student data and that teams are having opportunities to look at student data. This data here is from Hillcrest Elementary School and it is their SRSS data, which is Student Risk Screening Scale. So, it's a screener, a really short one, that just teachers do around behavior. And this is, when you see the I five, that means internalizing, right? So, students that might be exhibiting behaviors that are internalizing. You can see in the fall of 2014, they had about 56% screening in as low risk, but more students screening in at high risk. I think I got to go on for you. So, when they looked at that, when you think about that triangle that has the 80%, you know, 15%, 5%, they looked at that and they were like, okay, not all of our kids are coming, you know, are screening into low risk, not that 80% or more. So, what does that tell us? It doesn't mean we need to take that other, you know, 30 or 45% and put them into interventions. Instead, it means we might need to do something at core for all kids. So, that's what they did. And then, you can see that jump, which frankly is not very typical. That's like those weight loss commercials. It's not typical of other things, but it was really important to know and I think speaks to the, speaks to the work that they did around, you know, really amping up their PBIS efforts and then being very intentional about teaching social skills and being proactive. So, the next one is their externalizing behavior and you see a similar jump. So, another opportunity for those staff member to look at that data and say, wow, what do we need to do at core for everybody? So, this last year and moving into next year, when we think about sustainability, it's really important for us to continue to think about how to also look at academic data in the same way and together. So, this is like Ames Web data, for example. We're trying to organize it for schools in a way that looks similar to what they're seeing for behavior. And what the goal is, is that they can look at those things side by side, in addition to other types of data that might be informative, like office discipline referral data or absences or nurse visits, the kinds of things that might indicate to you that a student could potentially be struggling. So, that's something that we're going to continue to work on. So, it's great to have all that data, but what are they going to do with it? So, in those CI3T plans, every building has built-in tier-two supports and tier-three supports. In this case, you're looking, so if you see that grid right there, that's very small and you probably can't actually see what it says, but essentially, every building had to think through, okay, so if a student shows up and we've got that smaller number, we know we want to connect them with a support, what is the support? So, one of the things that buildings, I did it again, asked us to do is they wanted to be more consistent building to building. So, they asked us as a district to really support them in having some of the same things listed there. So, if I go to your school or your school, there's not completely different offerings in terms of what we're doing for students who might need a little additional help. But there has to be some room for customization and they've done that. So, that's what the secondary one looks like. I'm frozen again. I don't know what's wrong. And then, there's a tier-three one that looks very similar.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Yeah, please.
So, in those secondary and tertiary like options, is that typically additional staff? So, like the counselor or the social worker or the principal or someone working with the student? Or is it typically done in the classroom by the teacher? It's just different than what the other kids get?
It's such a great question. And that's really what people are grappling with because the initial thought is, well, I need more people. If I'm going to connect more kids to supports, then I need more individuals that are there and present to provide that support. But that's not always true, particularly when you're talking about behavior. If a student's struggling with something internalizing, they might just need a little bit like a tier-two intervention that's about, how do I respond, right? How do I have more opportunities to respond in the classroom? Or, when you think about everything that we're doing around personalized learning, there's great opportunities to think about if this student needs something a little extra I as the teacher, as the expert and the one who knows and understands, a student can potentially provide that. But in some cases, yeah, there might be other individuals who are, you know, more qualified or more prepared to implement that intervention. So, it can go both ways. But what we don't want is to start thinking about more people, more people, more people. Instead, we want to think about being really thoughtful about the resources that we have.
Thanks.
Sure. Okay. There's that tier-three one, which is very similar. All right. I did it again. Are you an IT person? I'm not sure. If I'm doing something... So, I'm just going to talk through our community. You guys are being so flexible with me. And if you know me well, I'm typically not very flexible, so I deserve an award. This is a challenge for me.
You can play with mine. You can draw on my mouse.
There we go. So, moving forward and then thinking about sustainability, communication's huge. And we've been hearing about this outside of just anything related to CI3T. We know that communication is really important. So, we have these teams that I talked about, 14 elementary leadership teams, four middle school leadership teams, two high school leadership teams, college and career leadership team. And then, this last year, we developed a district leadership team that has some principal representation and some district administrators on it. And the role and function of that team is to, is to take feedback. So, what are we seeing in these surveys that we're giving teachers? How are we soliciting that and what are we doing with it? And a lot of times, what those principals bring to the table is, here are things that our teams are grappling with and then we talk about it. So, what does that mean for us? How do we move forward? So, that feedback loop is essential, you know, as we move forward, that the structure's in place for people to filter their concerns and also their successes so that we can all learn from them and move forward. Thank you. Please, I hope we don't do it again.
Make sure it stays up.
Don't do what?
Make sure it...
Oh, good. Like, he's going to hang out with me. Okay. That makes me feel much better. All right. So, I do have a short video here. It's just like a minute and a half. This is, some of our CI3T teams have said, we need a team leader that's a teacher to support the principal in the implementation. So, she's going to talk with, see, that's what it does. I don't know what that is.
Do you have it saved?
Uh-huh. Sure. All right. While he's doing that, the following part after that, and I'm not even sure where I'm at with time, but we'll, if we can have the opportunity, we'll watch that video. It's the one that's on top of everything. It says BOE final. Because communication is key and in that spirit, some of the other things that we've done this year is, we have like on our district webpage, ooh, wrong one. Yeah, what's that? Ooh, it's gone mad. That's okay, I think I can wing it. We have, we've included a place on the district webpage for community members or staff to access some general information about CI3T. In terms of our internal communication, I communicate weekly with CI3T teams and I provide them with like successes. So, they send me pictures of things that are going really well. So, we highlight for them what other people are doing that can learn from one another. And then, also include like to-dos or reminders, things that will support them. And then, a lot of teams are then mimicking that for their staff. So, they're doing something similar. We also have a Twitter account. That's a really easy way for us to get information. So, in that feedback loop, we're hearing people are struggling with those darn tickets, right? They're just still struggling with, you know, how to provide behavior-specific praise. We can send some quick info out via social media to get people, you know, access to information that they're asking for. And then, if you just do a quick Google search, you would see almost every building has something on their website as well related to CI3T and their specific implementation. One of the goals for buildings, thank you, we'll see if it works. Let's just do it. Is that on?
Did you put the sound earlier there?
I did practice it and it worked earlier. It's not playing, so I don't know.
...leaders at Langston Hughes Elementary. And I was just going to talk today a little bit about being the team leader and why we felt it was kind of a good place for me to be. And probably the biggest thing we have is that teachers have a lot more buy-in with the teacher being the leader, just because they know that I'm in the trenches with them and I'm doing the same thing that they are doing. I'm having to implement it with them instead of asking them to implement it and then just kind of leaving them on their own. And so, that has been probably the biggest benefit to me, being a team leader, is that I can answer the questions that they ask just because I'm right there with them. I'm doing the same thing, so I can say, I've tried this. It also gives me a bigger base to get information from them so that then I can tell other people throughout the building, you know, Suzie is using this in her classroom and it's working really, really well. The other nice thing is that I've been able to take that information from the classroom teachers and then I make the PD. We do monthly staff meetings that are CI3T-focused. And so, this year, we focused on behavior and low-intensity strategies in the classrooms. And so, we've done things like instructional choice, opportunities to respond, and we've gone through a lot of those this year. So, then, the teachers have that information and then we've asked for some sort of watching them do it in the classroom. So, I'll go in while I'm either teaching in the classroom or pulling kids from the classroom. If I see something happening, we take a quick pic so everybody in the building can see it. And then, we just sort of talk through it if people have questions about using those strategies in the classroom. Our hope in the future is to now expand that to reading and math.
All right. And this was, this is our Twitter feed that I was just referring to. These are some examples of what those weekly emails look like with successes, pictures, things that I can really see. This is where you can find us on the district webpage. We want to continue to enhance that. And then, here's some of the examples of what you might find in building websites. And I think what I was just getting at was that one of the focuses for next year that teams really asked for is how do we continue to communicate out with parents because that's a struggle. So, some buildings have tried things. We've done things with their site teams and they're really excited and then we try and do something more for parents and they don't come or... And so, how do we get, you know, just the right amount of information to parents? So, communication, I think, with parents will continue to be a focus for teams. We'll support them in that. This implementation and process is certainly not without challenges. So, some of the things that we're challenged with are fidelity, for example. We're a huge system and that's true for anything. You take any piece or part of that plan and you think, are we implementing Reading Street with fidelity? Are we implementing the PBIS component with fidelity? And so, people are in various places in terms of their comfort level and so, that's something we continue to grapple with and support people in with professional learning. And some of our more personalized professional learning opportunities allows us to meet people, staff, if you will, where they are. The focus on the whole child piece and so, you know, the real benefit of this framework is that we have all these pieces. We're not just looking at a student academically or we're not just looking at a student socially or behaviorally. But it's difficult sometimes for us all to get this. We want to continue to focus on whole child. Social skills curriculum scheduling at the high school has been a challenge for us. So, that connect with kids. We have, Positive Action at Elementary was really easy to implement. The teachers are with the kids all day. They found time during the day and they implemented. Middle schools had advisory already built in, so that was a great opportunity or place to do social skills lessons. But at high school, there wasn't anything like that. So, this year, they had a committee come together of primarily teachers and they had to sort of work through it. What does this mean? Does this fit with our master agreement? They had to really think through all those pieces and they came up with a plan and they're ready to go. So, that one is hopefully kind of under us. And then, identifying concerns and feedback through the established structure. So, I showed you, we have all these ways that we're soliciting feedback from staff and we think that's really important. And we, it's difficult when you just hear something out here. What we really want is to filter those successes and those concerns through the structure that we have so that we're looking at the data collectively and able to address it in that manner, if that makes sense. So, really, the strength and the power of the CI3T framework is that we're building a system that allows us to breathe and to grow and to adapt. That's what it is. It's about evolution. So, I don't anticipate that we, that we'll ever be devoid of challenges. There'll always be a list here and that's okay because the system that we've built allows us to think about how do we address that and how do we share these successes? So, and we'll be prepared for the challenges as they come. You know, part of this is being proactive, so we want to anticipate some. We know, we can anticipate some challenges as they arise, just like teachers do with students, wanting them to be proactive. What questions do you have for me? I feel like I had to get a little hodgepodgey there and I apologize for the presentation, but is there anything that I can answer for you?
Any questions? I really appreciate this. I think, I don't think all districts are doing CI3T in this way. And I think having, I mean, I've seen pyramids all over, looking at academics.
Yes.
But I think applying that to the social and emotional needs of students is so important and really helps academically a lot. So I appreciate the work that you're doing and the work that all the staff are doing. I know probably everyone feels like there's, you know, so much work to do. And so ta- taking the time and focusing and doing this might be hard in that environment. But I do think it's paying off and appreciate the work.
I agree. Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you. And, yeah, you did everything that you should have done, hooking it up ahead of time. So not your fault. Okay. Sorry. Now I'm having tech problems. It's Ron May up next, right? Okay. We have a, next report is School Start Times with Ron May, the Director of Administrative Services.
It's like my monitor locked up. I don't think it works. Great. Okay, that's fine.
Good evening. I'm Ron May, Director of Administrative Services. And, um, they'll introduce themselves well with Mark Pruitt, Assistant Principal at LHS, and Sean Hanson, Assistant Principal at Southwest are gonna help with this presentation. And so we're just going to take a look at, um, as, as you, one of our board goals was to investigate late start times. We were, started off with a little bit of research and Sean and Mark, uh, along with, we had a pretty good-sized committee that came together and met. And Sean and Mark came up with a lot of, quite a bit of this research and presented it to the group and we all looked at it. So these are just the references. Also, I believe you received an email that had the scanned copies of this information as well. I'm gonna let Mark and Sean do a lot of the talking tonight because they're kind of in the trenches and some of the things we're talking about are things that they're observing and then we'll certainly happily answer any questions you have.
I'm Mark Pruitt. I'm Assistant Principal at Lawrence High and the Activities Director. And as we went through the research, it is pretty well-established. I mean, it's been out there for quite a while and there really wasn't debate around start time and, and the benefits for kids. Our question really formed around what is the sweet spot for the start time and what kind of gains might we expect to see? Thank you.
Sean Hanson, Assistant Principal at Southwest. And when, again, this just gave us the opportunity to look at what's best for kids. And when we started looking at that, um, the component of insufficient sleep in adolescents really started digging into, obviously, um, the numerous studies that had been taking place and pulled a couple of things here for us to really look at in correlation to what we currently have here in LPS with what's best for kids. And so as we transition into, you know, the wellness concerns, yes, insufficient sleep is a concern. How are we addressing that in LPS?
I wanted to call your attention to the, the slide that's embedded on the side. It's from a PowerPoint presentation. That was part of Professor Wallstrom, who's done sort of the gold standard research at the University of Minnesota. And as a debate coach, way back in 2002, the national topic was about education. Actually, my kids ran a case on late start sleep time. So I've, I've grappled with it for a long time. But one of the interesting things we noted was the impact of technology on sleep. And for those students who report getting less than eight hours, which tended to be, again, that the timeframe that they looked at as adequate sleep, 46.5% had a computer in their room that they identified as disrupting their sleep. 87.6 identified, like, a cellphone in their room. TV didn't have much of an impact. It's pretty, it's not interactive and most teenagers, at least in my experience, they don't really watch TV a lot. At night, they're on their phone, social media, Netflix, YouTube, whatever. And it's those, you know, two in the morning text messages they receive that disrupts their ability to sleep at night. But cellphones are a huge factor that, um, we looked at. Maybe we need to do a lot more educating of parents and appropriate use of cellphones in the bedroom at night. And that may give us some big gains there. So in looking at, at start times, in a Department of Education review, 43% of high schools start before 8:00. We start 8:05. So we are in that group that actually starts later. In the Minnesota study, you can see start times, again, the embedded slide from a presentation by Dr. Wallstrom. Most of those times moved from 7:30, 7:35. We saw start times as early as 7:15, 7:20. That moved to after 8:00 is where they saw a lot of their gains. The key piece that, that we picked out was the report that from 8:01 onward, start time was not significantly associated with getting adequate sleep on weeknights.
I'm sorry. I gotta interrupt you. Because that was actually, I read that study and that was actually the mean of those times. But if you look at the Minnesota studies, they all moved to 8:30 or 8:45 and that's where they found their gains. So I, I think that's a little inaccurate.
Right. And that, that's actually what we grappled with quite a bit, was those schools went from, uh, like, a 7:30, some 7:20 to an 8:30. That hour jump had huge gains. Our question was, if we go from 8:05 to 8:30, what gains do we see? You know, and are they gonna be comparable to the gains that were reported by moving in an hour?
I'll, I'll hold off, but, but the, the research has an answer for, for you on that.
And, and that's sort of indicated in the slide up there, which talks about start time and the percent of kids who got that magic eight or more hours of sleep. You do see the increase from 45-ish percent, if you group the eight, 8:05's together, versus the 57 to 60% if you move to 8:30. So there is that jump of 10 to 15% of kids who get that additional sleep.
So as we looked at the studies, as we looked at the research, and then really determined how does this apply to Lawrence Public Schools? And as we started looking at focusing on the secondary schools, all six schools have zero hours starting at 7:00. We do have some of the high schools that some of the students already on a late start schedule reduced throughout the week, not just simply that one day late start started at 9:05. So we've embedded some of the late starts throughout the, throughout the week for students, once a week, and then, um, throughout the, depend on student need, when they're arriving throughout the school year. We do have, uh, Free State. Mr. Graber is looking at piloting, kind of an eighth period, an eighth hour. Now, it's more focused on the credit recovery, okay? But that's something that he is looking at, trying to embed. He's gonna do more pilot this next school year and then looking ahead to the '17, '18 on how we can expand that to better reach the needs of all students.
Shannon?
Can you educate me a little bit, since I don't, I will have a middle school student next year, but I'm not there yet? What, uh, what students and teachers are using the zero hour for at the middle school and also at the high schools? What typically is occurring in that first hour?
At the middle school level, we currently offer one class, which is our zero hour choir. It's our competitive choir. Each group, each school has their own name for it, such as Southwest. Bel Canto, some of that competition choir that runs approximately from that 7:00 to 7:50 timeframe. Obviously, some students need to dip out a little bit early to go get breakfast, things like that. But each of the four middle schools has competition choir at 7:00.
At Lawrence High School, we are, we've actually been reducing the number of zero hours. So next year, we'll have a weights class. We have our leadership, StuCo class. In the past, we've had, like, anatomy has been taught zero hour psychology. The problem was the numbers in those zero hours was declining and it was hard to justify a section of 10 kids when during the day we had sections of 28. So it was, we've reduced those to free up that additional section of teaching time sort of during the, the typical school day.
Shannon, I think it's safe to say that Free State, I think it's safe to say Free State has more offerings at zero hour.
At zero hour, okay.
And maybe is a little bit more, I don't know, in their culture or, I think it's safe to say there are more kids attending zero hour at Free State.
I'm not sure that what the right way to, is to phrase this question, but are we, is there a certain type of student that they're targeting with the zero hour classes? Or are there offerings available that would kind of cut across student interest, student, you know, activities?
Oftentimes, it's students who can't fit everything they want to take into seven hours. So for example, if you want to be in band and choir, you may try to gain one of those required courses or required elective courses into zero hour to free up time during the school day. And some kids take it because they'd rather be there at 7:00, get out at 2:00 and then go work or do whatever they do. So some students go zero through six. Other students, my daughter was an example, went zero through seven. So it just kind of depends on individual need, you know? And then in terms of those who are able to take it, requires transportation. And that's probably a barrier for a fair number of kids.
Okay. And what is, and maybe you're gonna get to this, but what's the prevalence of, um, extracurricular activities being scheduled before school versus after school? And, and, or, and/or athletic practices? Is that something that's common or not as common?
It's coming up. I mean, we've got some of that on the slide.
Then, then let's hold, let's hold off. Let's hold off. Okay. All right, sure. Sorry.
On that note, that was a great segue to our next piece here. As we're looking at the, I mean, we talked about the number of students and again, Free State has quite a few more offerings that came up in one of the initial meetings that we had. And again, not to speak for Free State, because I don't have their schedule in front of me, but at that time, they were not looking to make any changes to those number of offerings just to decrease class size throughout the school day. But as we look at and segue into athletics or just simply extracurricular activities, if we did shift, um, move to more of a later start for the school day, obviously practices, everything, there's a domino effect, would have to slide back. We gave one example for basketball to where each building, each high school has eight teams. And right now, as it fits, you would have practices running anywhere from 9:00, 9:30. By the time kids are transitioning out of practice, 9:30, 10:00, and then focusing on coming home. If we shifted school time back, obviously that could open up a morning practice time, which you're still gonna have. Some students, then, they're gonna have to come in early to get that taken care of, get practice taken care of before they would begin attending their first hour of the day. And that, there are some obstacles there with some of those students eliminating the opportunity there for, for a zero hour, depending on if they were involved. You know, one of the things we talked about that came up in the committee is not only the loss of instruction time for our students, but it's, it's pulling the coaches, pulling the teachers out of the classroom. That right now, they may be missing that seventh hour timeframe, shifting times back could entail them missing sixth hour, seventh hour, students dipping out at the end of fifth hour. So more instructional time lost. And again, even with sliding those times back for students that are, are involved in extracurricular activities, it does not reduce the amount of participation. So students are still looking for that opportunity to participate in extracurricular activities, which is fantastic. And then the potential impact on students, obviously, that are working after school. For even more so, looking bigger picture for some of our staff members, that, whether certified, classified staff, that they're relying on that second job to get them throughout the week. So it looked at multiple considerations as we were pulling this information together.
I read recently that Wichita was, with their shift in start times, had concerns about, um, athletic practice having to end half an hour earlier because they don't have lighted fields. Did, was that, is that something that would happen in our district? Or that you all discussed as part of the, um, this particular part of the discussion?
I think most of our fields are lit. Tennis is not, but softball, baseball, football, that may be a consideration with some of the neighborhood organizations if we start moving practices into the evenings. That may be something that has to be revisited.
Okay.
Um, also, I wanted to call attention to that first bullet point. Um, if, if you walk the halls of Lawrence High on a late start Wednesday, before 8:00, we probably have close to half our students already in the building. So we have a cafeteria with several hundred students. We have a library full and the hallways are full. So in part, and this is before even the buses would arrive, we have lots of kids that because of their ride situation, and we'll have kids that arrive in the morning by 6:30 to 6:45. We have kids that are there till after 5:00 or 5:30 because that's just their transportation and how it works out. So there would be some students that, you know, I think we're still gonna have some kids that are in the building regardless because that's when they get dropped off.
So, uh, my understanding is that even though there's a late start, the, the buses don't have a late start, so the buses, uh, run at the, the regular time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So that would account for at least some of those kids?
But even before the buses, we still have...
No, no, I get that. But that would account for some of the kids, at least.
Yes.
Okay.
But even with the middle school, at the middle school level, we have students showing up at 6:30 AM also. And we're not on the late start schedule. And these are students that are not necessarily, I know it's a small percentage, but students that are not participating in zero hour choir. There are sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade students that have been on campus as early as 6:30 and they're sitting out there waiting for us to open the building to allow them in.
Okay.
So, and, and, and just, and to that also, you're right about the busing. And part of that is, um, rural, rural routes. We run combined elementary, middle and high. And so that is part of that issue. So you could potentially run those high schools, well, you could, you could potentially run some of them later, but then it would be an additional cost to go get them later. And then it also would bump into, uh, the double tiering that we have for the late. So we did come up with just a few scenarios. These are not the only scenarios, obviously, but we just kinda, we, we were looking at a few. You know, the first one, you know, the easiest way to anything would be just to bump everybody equally. You know, if you wanted to make a minimal change of, let's say, 15 minutes, you know, you could bump all start times 15 minutes. I think where we would see the biggest push would be with those late start elementary buildings. You know, they're already starting at 8:45. So that would be a bump to 9:00. But it would gain some time. We did also look at, um, what if we took all the elementary buildings and moved them to an early start and then moved all the secondaries to an, to an 8:45 start, let's say? So basically, sticking at 8:45 because what it comes down to is that's what our, that maxim, that's allows us to maximize our busing and double routes as, to the best of our ability.
Let me clarify on that, Ron. So you're basically saying that if you're gonna use one bus for two routes, you need 45 minutes in between?
Yes, ma'am. Exactly. So you'll, you'll use a route. Currently, what we do is you have, we have, uh, um, seven elementary buses and all of our secondary buses, they run their 8:00 routes. And then they go back out and some total of, I believe, 12, uh, 12 buses, go back out and pick up the ESL schools in the building and the, the late start schools and go back and pick them up and then deliver them to school. And by doing that, it, it, it basically, it takes a, a, a route is $220 a day approximately. When we tier that, they only charge us an additional $20. So it, it makes that second route $20 more, so you get two routes for $240. So that's obviously to our advantage economically speaking. So in that vein, uh, we have seven elementary buses that are double tiering, which means we would have to find a way, you know, and we'd have to find a way to double tier some other way. Or, like I said, if we had to add those seven buses, that, when you take that $220 a day times 186 days, you come up with the $286,000. It's not to say that there couldn't be some room to improve that, but I don't know if it would be a lot less.
Right, because we're not busing that many elementary students. So the bulk of the students are at the secondary level.
Right.
And if they're all starting at the same time, then you need that many buses.
Yeah. The, the bulk of our elementary busing is the ESL students that we're taking from, to, and bringing them to the, to the
Right.
cluster sites. And then, uh, the other, the other scenario is to continue, um, or to look at just adding an eighth period to the, uh, to the high schools and, and basically creating a three start and end times and allowing students that freedom to, to choose to come. And, and, you know, at, again, if you don't want any economic impact, you continue to bus the 8:05 only. If you wanna look at busing a 9:00 group or making the 9:05 start the busing group, then you would have to, we'd have to look at what that cost might be. And then, of course, you know, something we didn't put in there is while, you know, in the, in the negotiations, we talk about, we, we don't talk about specific times. We talk about before and after, but, you know, there's gonna have to be some discussion with, with teachers and what, you know, do we take volunteers? Do we say, "These are what you're going to do"? You know, those kinds of scenarios. You know, I would recommend at this time, just from looking at it, we want to definitely consider additional flexible scheduling options at the high schools by offering more opportunities for students, maintaining the current start and end times for elementary and middle schools. I mean, that's, that's what I would, we would certainly recommend, especially when we're talking about maximizing the transportation efficiencies. It's not to say that there aren't other ways that we can look at it. It was interesting, I was, as we looked at some of this research, you see some of the places were like, I think Iowa. There was a place in Iowa where they said they made the changes and they actually saved $30,000. And I'd be interested to see what their transportation setup was before and after and if maybe they were able to actually take advantage of double tiering that they weren't doing before or something like that. It would be interesting to see what, what those scenarios were. I didn't dig into those that... I didn't dig into those that closely.
Ron, real quick, I may have missed this, because I was paying attention to something else. What percentage of our secondary students are able to get themselves to school and are not taking advantage of a bus? So if we decided this, this last scenario where we've got three start and end times, but only bus at the eight oh five, is that going to be inequitable, because only the students who have the ability to own a car and drive themselves would have the option of taking that earlier class? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I, I do not have hard numbers for you. Do you know, how many buses come to LHS?
A lot.
Yeah.
I'm going to have to fill the bus lane in about half a block.
Yeah, I, if, if I had to, I would say there's probably five or six buses that go to the high school, and that, and those hold, they will hold, well, like, if they're totally full, they're going to hold around sixty or seventy kids. So, a piece, yes, sorry. So that, you know, six buses, seventy kids, four hundred and twenty students. And keeping in mind also, it's those, you know, it's the one, you know, who qualifies, two and a half miles or more. You know, we do have a lot of kids that do qualify because of the way our boundaries are drawn, so you do have kids coming, traveling across town. But you're, you're right, there are definitely some questions to be asked as to who can get to school, you know, you know, like, who's, who's bound to their parents being able to bring them when they're on their way to work, and who can catch a ride with a friend, or who can walk a few blocks. There's definitely some things to look at there.
But to be fair, that's a current issue.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, currently, kids aren't able to participate in zero hour and get transportation.
Absolutely.
Or if they stay after school for clubs or activities, then they don't get a ride home, even if they live farther than two and a half miles.
And so, maybe that was something I misunderstood. We don't have any busing for any late activities at all? So if the student stays for anything, there's only one busing time at the end of school?
Yeah, for, for educational purposes, there's, it's, it's the, it's the times at the start and end time, you know, eight oh five, and eight o'clock, and three oh five. If you're in an activity that's scheduled, you know, if you're, you know, obviously athletics or a music event or something like that, that's traveling somewhere, then there's, but they're still not door-to-door, those students are brought back to the school, and then they're picked up, or they get home from there, yeah.
Okay. So they would be confined, and so this end time, if we created three start and end times, then the same thing would occur at the end time? If they didn't have alternate transportation, then they would be confined to that?
Well, it could be. If, if, yeah, if they, if they absolutely needed busing, at the way that I, this proposal here, yes, you're right, they would be confined to the eight oh five to th, to three oh five.
But we're thinking that's probably not as many, because not as many of those students, not, not as many of the students need busing, and...
It's, it's, it's a, well, if you have four hundred kids, that's about a third of your population. But then, keeping in mind that those students that are, that are in activities and athletics things, they're getting the bus there, but they're not taking it back, they're getting a ride.
So somebody's already trying to, is already taking care of them.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Well, but, you know, but there are kids who can't do activities because of the lack of transportation, you know, and you have the zero hour kids, some of them won't do it, they'd like to do it, but they won't do it, because it's at seven AM.
Yeah.
Some of them are dropping out who did it at seven AM, but they couldn't tolerate the, the early time.
I guess, I guess, you know, one of the things that I was thinking about as I was reading through the, the report ahead of time, is that, you know, obviously, there's a lot of compelling research about kids' internal biological circadian rhythms, schedule, all of that, and later is better. My reaction to all of this was that if we were really going to seriously think about making a change like this, I think that there are a whole lot of other conversations to be had with community groups, first and foremost, parents and students, but also, you know, all the different organizations in town that work with our kids before and after school, so Boys and Girls Club, and there's any number of groups. Us making a change like this would affect a whole lot of other things that go on in our community, so, you know, I, I guess that, that's, if, if there is a, an interest in looking at this further, I, I think that there's just a lot of work still to be done to really have a better understanding of what impact it would have, and whether, and whether our families would support it. I mean, I, you know, I was thinking about this through my own personal lens of, you know, at the time that I have a high school student, I'm going to have a student at each one of the levels, and, and that's probably why you have students that are showing up at six thirty or seven in the morning and just hanging out, if you, I'm making one trip to drop you all off, and it's going to be based on the kid that's got to be at school first, right? So, you know...
Or even the kid who can be unsupervised the longest.
Or the kid that can be unsupervised most easily, right? So, or the distance, you know, if you have, I, I, I live close to a high school, so my kid could be unsupervised and walk, but if I didn't live close to that high school, and they had to be driven, you know, I'm sorry, your, your sibling's going to be at school at eight o'clock, so I got, you're going at eight o'clock too. So I think there's just a lot of, a lot of different things that would be impacted by this decision.
And that's a, and that's a compelling, and one of, probably one of the biggest things when you look at these school start times, is we do have students who get on buses very early in the morning.
Yes.
And even if we were to go to a nine o'clock start, those kids are still going to be getting on buses at seven thirty.
Especially those rural kids, because we're running one route for...
Yeah, exactly. Exactly, so, yeah.
So then, so then the question is, what, what real benefit are we going to get for those students having a later start time? Like, you know, yes, the research shows ideally if they could all show up at school at nine o'clock, but are we going to see that same impact in reality with our, with our students? And I just, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not saying we won't, but I have a lot of questions about it.
Just let Shannon finish, and then, yes, you'll have the floor.
No, no. Oh, I was just saying, can I speak to that? Because I, turn the lights up.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Got some things here. No, because I, I appreciate that, you know, you outlined some of the benefits from the later start time, but I think you missed a few. So, and I appreciate the fact that you distributed the articles. I've got another couple dozen empirical studies on the issue. So the benefits that you find are, you actually find benefits in terms of emotional functioning. Kids who get more sleep, they tend to be less depressed and less anxious, you get less tardies, you get reduced absenteeism, kids get better grades, there are fewer automobile accidents, which you did mention, so I appreciate that. You actually, sleep actually affects sort of glycemic functioning, and so you actually get less obesity, less diabetes. You get, and this is what the research shows, kids consume less caffeine, coffee, soda, energy drinks, it improves their immune functioning. One of the studies showed, which one of my colleagues did, was actually, and I don't know how they got this through human subjects, but they had, you know, they had people who got adequate sleep and inadequate sleep, and they gave the squirt of the cold virus up their nose, and the kids who...
I wouldn't sign that in form of consent.
But, but the people who got adequate sleep were much less likely to get a cold. So it's, it's related to immune functioning. And there's research that shows that they make better choices when they have adequate sleep, in terms of, you know, less likely to engage in risky behavior. And there's one study, actually, Minnesota study, said it makes the, them easier to live with. So there are...
All good things.
And that was reported, that was reported by the parents, yes.
Yes. So there are a lot of benefits. But the thing I really want to emphasize are two things. One is that, you know, kids' circadian rhythms change. You know, when, you know, the hormones change when they hit adolescence, they produce melatonin later at night, and so it's not that they don't, you know, they want to, you know, don't want to go to sleep earlier, they can't, because that's the nature of adolescence. But the other thing that, that the research shows is that the kids who benefit the most from this tend to be boys, they actually get more sleep, we have an achievement gap with boys. The, the other one, kids who benefit most from this are the ones with low SES, and who tend to be in performing in the bottom half. So where you get the benefits from this is actually for the kids who need it the most, the kids who are most at risk. So I appreciate that there are logistical considerations, but, you know, I think that other school districts have been able to figure out how to do this. Seattle, which is a large school district, this year is moving to later start times because they realize that the research, and what the research says. So I, I mean, I agree that this probably needs a more extensive discussion. I'm, I'm sorry that, that this has been on the board goals for almost a year, and we're only talking about it now. But I think that if this board believes that data, I'm going to say the wrong word, but data is important, the research is important, I think that, you know, we should honor that, we should be guided by that. So I, I think that we should put this on the board goals again, but we should deal with it early, we should have those conversations. And I appreciate that, you know, you know, parents, some parents will find it easier, and some parents will find it more difficult, but I think at the end of the day, while parent, parental considerations are important, I also think that what's in the best interest of kids. You know, and when I look at the kids who are most affected by this, I think it would be a real shame not to, to deal with this. And I think there are a lot of potential ways that this could be done with. You know, you, you could move everything back twenty minutes or twenty-five minutes, and you would have less of an impact on some of those schools. But, you know, there's nothing magical about an eight or an eight forty-five start time for the elementary schools. Those are kids who are functioning before these, these hormonal shifts take place, and so you can play around a little bit with those start times and see if you can arrange, you know, to move the high schools and the middle schools back, and still, you know, get this kind of savings from double routes. If you start a school at seven fifty, or eight twenty, or whatever it is, I think that, you know, I, I have faith in the staff that they're creative enough to figure out a way to do this, if we decide that all of these benefits are really worth the effort. I mean, I think if somebody came to us, and I apologize for monopolizing the floor, but I think if somebody came to us with a program and said, you know, you can increase academic achievement, and you can reduce tardies, and you can have all of these benefits, I think we'd be jumping and saying, sign us up. This was the argument that we had for Abbott. People came to us and said, teachers came to us and said, look, this is a really good program, and there's costs associated with it, but we think those costs are justified. The Abbott program helps a few kids, this would help a lot of kids, it would help the Abbott kids too, frankly. So as you can tell, I'm, I, I think the science is really clear, I think we should take the time, we should do this right, and we should, we should spend next year and figure out how to do this.
I do have a question, Rick, about your comments, which is, which is this. I read through all the articles that were sent out to the board, and my takeaway from it was that, you know, when they talk about later start times, they're talking about schools, as they said that, you know, we're starting much earlier than our schools, we're moving to times that are later. So I really did not get a strong sense that, unless you wanted to make a very drastic change and go, what, the, what was the Academy of Pediatrics recommendation, that we shouldn't start before ten or eleven in the morning?
Well, no, their recommendation was eight thirty.
Well, okay, so, so, so in your mind, are you talking about moving to eight thirty, or are you talking about, because I, I kind of read all that, and I, and I thought, okay, we're at eight o'clock, we're, we're within that kind of range of eight to nine o'clock, that it seems as if you are getting some benefit from having a later start time, so...
I read all those articles, and I don't, and there was one article that talked about a mean of eight oh one, but if you look at the other articles and you read them closely, they're talking about eight thirty or later. And again, I've got, I've got, if you, if you're curious, I've got two dozen studies, I'll be happy to send them.
Well, I don't, I'm not, I'm not arguing that the, that the, the science isn't there, because you're right, it is there. So, so what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to quantify in my own head is, if we're talking about moving from eight oh five to eight thirty, is it really justified? You know, for example, would, would we really be justified in spending a quarter of a million dollars to do that, particularly in the budget environment that we're in? So, you know, are we going to spend a year talking about it to get to the end of the next year and go, you know, yeah, this is a great idea, but guess what, we have zero ability, because we're already deficit spending, to do this? And so that's, that's, I don't want, I don't want to send our staff out to, to spend a whole lot of intensive time to do that, if that's going to be the end result of the conversation, and if, at the end of the day, we're already kind of almost there with our current schedule.
I don't think we are almost there, and if you look at the research, that, you know, moving from eight to eight thirty would, on average, give kids an additional seventeen to twenty minutes sleep, that's what the research suggests.
Which you might, we might actually get that if we could just get people to take their cell phones away from their kids at night, as well, I mean, that's...
No, 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 I, I think we should do that too, but I think as, you know, as kids get older...
Except when the locals have control, right? What do we have in control?
No, 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 kids get older, you have, you, you find you get a lot less control over their sleep, their, their bedtimes, trust me. But I, I, I don't think that, you know, I look at that figure of, do you want to go back a slide, order, with the possibilities?
Two hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Right, so, you know, if you look at that, move all elementary start times to eight, and secondary start times to eight forty-five, I would navigate eight forty-five, but I think there are creative ways that we could figure out to do this in such a way that we're not spending that amount of money. You know, one of the articles that was actually in the ones, I think it was in the one that you distributed, said actually that, that, you know, this is sort of the equivalent of adding a bunch of teachers, in terms of the benefit that you get, at, at much less of a cost. So I think there are ways to do this. Other districts have figured out a way to do it that doesn't bust the, the budget. And, you know, and, and I guess I have a real reaction to the fact that this is really good for our kids, this is really good for our low-performing kids, this is really good for our at-risk kids, but it costs something, and so we're not going to do it. So I think the focus should be on, let's figure out a way that this is feasible. I think you guys are creative, I think that if you play around with the start times, even if you move, you know, the schools to eight twenty, eight twenty-five, I think there would, there would be a benefit, and maybe there's less of an impact. So all of these things are important, and certainly, the, the impact on parent, on parents are important, but again, for me, at the end of the day, it's like, it's, it's a shame kids are getting there at six thirty, I mean, that's just, that's, that's not a good, good situation, and I guarantee you, those kids are not getting enough sleep. But if we could benefit a lot of our kids who are at risk, even if we had to spend some additional money, and I'm hoping it's a whole lot less than that, I think that's worth pursuing.
I think we ought to continue the discussion during goal setting. Do we need, I mean, I think exploring the idea of adding the eighth period at the high school is a good one, and I imagine that explore, exploration is going to happen regardless, so...
Yeah, there are advantages to that, irrespective of this discussion, just in terms of spreading out the building, spreading out the kids over another period.
But I, but I do have a, I do have a question or issue about that, because that's only at Free State, right?
Well, yeah, officially, Free State came and asked for permission to be able to work on this. Like Mark said earlier, we've been doing flexible scheduling with students, especially some of our juniors and seniors who don't need as many credits, and so some of them are doing their own kind of late start, early, early release. So they, they've been very accommodating to some, to a lot of students, it's just not, you know, we just don't have mass.
But only at Free State?
No, no, they do that at Free State.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, Free State is, the Free State is the first one who's scheduling classes later, to say, we are going to have a, actually add that eighth period. What, what LHS has done is, you don't need all the credits, so you can come in at nine and take four or five, okay, thank, I wasn't very clear on that.
Thanks for the clarification. Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Thank you so much for the report and for the investigation.
Thank you.
Okay, our last agenda item tonight is the legislative and school finance update and possible board action with Kyle Hayden, David Cunningham, and Kathy Johnson.
The last board meeting, we talked about, give a report about the current status of the Kansas legislative action and Supreme Court action related to the Gannon II case. And at that point in time, there was a looming potential school shutdown. Happy to say right now that we don't necessarily have that, but that is also pending, Supreme Court reviewing the latest legislative action. So, as of June 23, legislature reconvened, special session. Within two days, they came out and passed legislation in both houses that apparently has solved the equity issue that was brought before them by the Supreme Court. So, at this point in time, you know, when we had created this board enclosure, we did so with, when you look to the end with a bunch of different items to look at as far as action items or things to consider for the district if and when we were at a position where we needed to do some things to solve a school shutdown. Really, nothing has changed from the standpoint of we're not, we haven't completely resolved it. Until the Supreme Court has given us feedback on the latest ruling or on the latest legislative action, this, these items are still hanging out there, looming out there for us to potentially deal with. So, we want to talk a little bit, revisit that just a little bit, walk through some of those things. Guess we should, you know, make note that, that commendation should be out there for the quick action, the bipartisan support, you know, listening to school district leaders. Certainly want to thank our local legislative reps, legislative reps for engaging with us, reaching out to us in exchange of some emails and phone calls and things of that nature, and, and they certainly have represented our, understood our local interests and the impact to us. I think it's too bad it doesn't happen all the time as far as the bipartisan, you know, cooperation and compromise and engaging school leaders in particular. But the plan that's currently laid out unfortunately doesn't bode that well for Lawrence Public Schools. And so we're going to talk a little bit about that. But in general, the changes are not financially beneficial, and in fact, we're going to be losing money that we had built into our budget plan. And given that it's June 27, and the new fiscal year starts July 1, and negotiations is, you know, right at the verge of being settled, then it puts us in a little bit of a predicament, so. But Kathy's going to talk a little bit about the financial piece to make sure you have adequate time to answer some, ask some questions and have those answered, and then we'll proceed through the rest of the administrative recommendation.
Kyle, real quick, I want to thank you and Rick for being available and engaging with legislators. I know that following all of those bills and staying ahead of it and giving input is a lot of work, and I appreciate that you both did that during the session.
Good evening, Kathy Johnson, Director of Finance. So, they did decide in a couple of days on a bill, they needed about $37.5 million to fund what needed to be what they thought was, really kind of goes back to the old formula. Fortunately, they removed a provision, one of the options was to cut us about a half a percent in general fund, and that didn't happen. So, the funding for that's coming out of some Kansas Bioscience Authority assets, it's coming from some money from the tobacco lawsuit, it's coming from some motor vehicle temporary assistance to needy families, some reduction in extraordinary needs, so districts that are growing or potentially can apply for some extraordinary needs, that pool of dollars they shrunk a little bit to do. And then they also froze funding for the virtual school. And so those last two are the two that kind of have an impact to us. The extraordinary needs fund is one that we can apply to if we have growth in enrollment or a decrease in assessed valuation or some things like that, that because we're on the block grant and, and funding is not available to us through growth of enrollment, and that may be something that we go ahead and try to apply for just because we do know we have some growth in enrollment. Whether we'll actually receive something from that, we won't know until we go through the process. The virtual school, freezing that at the 2016 level would mean that basically the formula works the way it works today for us. Going with the 1617 funding formula, we thought we could realize about $600,000 as a result of, of going to the, the higher base state aid per pupil for full-time virtual. With that going as frozen, we won't realize those dollars. So, what we were building into the plan, that kind of goes away. So, we didn't actually lose something from this year, but we lost that potential ability. When it comes to capital outlay, we did gain that state aid, that state aid will be able to put into our capital outlay. It doesn't impact our mill levy, but it doesn't also go into, to general fund. Now, with the new capital outlay resolution, that does allow us some flexibility of what we pay out of capital from what we used to have to kind of follow, and so there may be some things that we try to adjust that direction, both to help with any budget constraints in the general fund as well as some of our, our deficit spending that we're trying to minimize. The LOB piece, or the equalization for the LOB, we actually are a district that although we will realize some additional state aid, because we are at our maximum, it is not state aid we can use as new budget dollars. It will only be to us as a district property tax relief, which means it will impact the mill levy for the LOB, and that, it's, it's an increase of about $1,005,000, which could be about a, a mil and a half decrease in our LOB fund particularly. So, it is property tax, it is not new dollars to us, kind of under the proposed formula that first came out of the legislature, that, that state aid component could, could be used for that, or it could be used to, to generate some new dollars and, and raise the mill levy to offset kind of thing, and that was one of the inequities of, of what they passed. So, that is something that, that will be taken away from us in that respect. So, although we have that outcome, the court has not ruled on it, the court hadn't given their stamp of okay. So, we do have some things that are still unknown out there, so we kind of have to proceed with, we stop three days at the, until the end of the month. And so part of the, the motion that we're talking about is to still go ahead and allow us some ability to navigate those three days if something happens that, that we're not, not on top of or don't know about, I guess, more to say, we don't know about, that we have to make a decision right on June 30 before you have another board meeting. So, those are the financial impacts. I don't know if you want me to go through the list at all, or if you're going to just come back and go through the motions.
I don't think there's, I'm not going to read through the list. You guys can see that up there, if, most of them, we talked, I think we talked through the last time we met. Really what we're seeking here, if you turn to the rationale or the recommendation in the motion, is basically to summarize what Kathy says, we still, it's not final, final, until the Supreme Court gives, you know, their thoughts on that. It's obviously a very dynamic situation still, there's unknowns, things can flip in a hurry, and so even though we're, you know, singing the praises of, oh, we've done it and celebrate, I think we need to hit the pause button and say, okay, there may not be things all worked out. So, this would allow for some flexibility for superintendent to work with board, board officers on any types of things that could, that could need to be taken care of regarding payroll or paying bills, is really what it comes down to. So, all of the items above, the check marks next to them are the things that we had discussed at the last meeting. So, specific questions to those for Kathy or Dave, if you have those, feel free to ask.
Any questions? Comments? Okay. I'm glad school will likely be open, and we could pay you on July 1 rather than not. But yeah, I do think it is disappointing, the virtual aid will be different. You know, I think it's bears mentioning that the bump in funding for virtual schools came out of a study, a legislative audit study, where they thought, we're spending too much on virtual schools, we're going to study how much it really costs, and then at the end of the study said, oh, we're not spending sufficient on virtual schools, and chose to bump the amount. I think if they did a similar study with general education expenses and money, they would find a similar relationship, and hopefully next year, when the Supreme Court looks at the adequacy case and all of that goes through, will, will recognize that Kansas schools are being forced to operate with significantly less money than they need. But I think it's disappointing that our virtual schools, or our virtual school is not going to be funded at the level that the legislative audit expressed desire for this next year. But I appreciate the update. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, but I was going to say first, you're right, I agree with you about the virtual schools, and I think one of the things that's gotten the legislature into this mess is, is their reaction to the custody that happened in 2005 that showed exactly that, that they, they weren't even then providing enough money to fund all of the things that they were asking us to do, and that has not gotten any better over the last 10 years, 11 years. So, I, you know, I would be shocked if the outcome of adequacy discussion is anything other than, yes, not only are you as behind as, as you were in 2005, but now you're even more behind because you've added even additional things on to what your expectations are and, and school districts' responsibilities are, and you've just dug an even bigger hole, so.
Well, they'll just take it out, out of the university budget so it can be filed.
Which is equally.
Because you guys are so overfunded anyway, right?
Which is short-sighted, you know, that's, that's the problem is that there's.
Or early childhood. I mean, think about, and I don't mean to interrupt, but how many of those things? I mean, we sold the tobacco settlement to get a short-term financing option to fund this issue. I mean, there's, and early head start programs, I mean, yeah, it's.
You want to talk about, talk about, cutting off your nose to spite your face, you know, the, the discussion we just had about school start times, and, you know, if somebody came to you and said, here are all these wonderful things that happen if you do this, and, you know, and it's only going to cost you this much. Early childhood is the perfect example of how policymakers are doing exactly the opposite of what you would think they would do, because every study shows that high-quality early childhood saves you money in the long run on a host, not only in education, but a host of other states.
Juvenile attention, yeah.
Exactly. And yet, yeah, makes absolutely no sense. All right. Are we, are we all done venting?
I don't know. For the moment.
It feels pretty good.
Right, long enough for me to read the motion anyway. I move the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to make the necessary decisions at his discretion, including but not limited to the items outlined in this enclosure and within compliance of the courts and other legal and statutory provisions in order to prepare for the upcoming school year and ensure minimal disruption to the operations of the district while still maintaining financial stability.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, or do we need to?
I just.
Yeah, he just seconded.
I just.
Do we need a voice? Okay, go ahead, Janice. Or any further discussion?
No.
Janice.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much, Kyle, and Kathy, and Dave.
And that may have been the fanciest motion that I've ever heard as a superintendent, so it's my last one.
As your last, it's a good thing that you're going out with that. All right. And now just a motion to adjourn. Do we want to try and make that fancier?
I move we adjourn. Second.
All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Congratulations.